In the today, November the third, two thousand and twenty-two, called the meeting to order as a special meeting of council to discuss the active living center as well as the Marathon public works facility. So we'll get right into the discussion and we'll introduce through Mr. Krasinski, the team, and Mr. Paris.
So thanks your worship. So I'll just preface the presentation today before we hand it over to our professional consulting team, who will take counsel through approximately thirty-five, forty-minute presentation. And then, of course, question and answer period with counsel at the end of that. So what we're bringing forward today is a re-envisioned concept for the Active Living Center. Council will recall, initially, we looked at the former Public School Stevens Avenue site. Since that time, obviously, we've had the Ballard camp located there and now recently the Generation PGM camp, as they've taken that over from Ballard. So at the start of our strategic planning process this year, council directed administration to look at a new concept that included looking at the Peninsula Harbor waterfront for a re-envisioned active living center. So over the course of the last number of months, we worked with our teams in Vancouver and North Beta to put this presentation together for council. And ultimately, what we're looking for from council today is an approval of the site concept. So council's not going to see any numbers with respect to budget or project costs. That was not part of this assignment. What we're looking for today is council's feedback and hopefully approval of the site concept. So we can budget for that moving forward in two thousand and twenty-three as part of the budget approval. And then working through the next phases of this project to hopefully continue to move it forward with the new term of council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Fry. Joe, I'll let you just take through the introductions from your end with your team and Ian, and then we'll jump right into the presentation if that works for you both.
Works for us. I, just in the interest of time and thanks to Mayor and council and staff for your time today. I'll just briefly introduce our team, myself, Joe Fry. Joey, you can call me Joey if you want. But Principal with Hapa Collaborative, Stefan Staliga from our team, who's been working on both this project as well as some of the Pebble Beach renovations that we've been looking at with Mark. Lucia Blanco, who's been putting together a lot of the graphics for the project. Pass it over to Ian if you want to just quickly introduce yourself to him.
Thanks, Joe, and your worship and counsel. My name is Ian Hill. I'm the principal architect with Critchley Hill Architecture. I have been working with Joe on the input that's gone into the review of the site and some of the presentation and have collaborated with Joe regarding some of the impact of the building, its location, the sighting. And I have been in the town of Marathon on numerous occasions over the past number of years and certainly very familiar with the site that we're going to talk about this afternoon and look forward to everyone's feedback and Joe's presentation.
So I hope everyone can see my screen here. The Active Living Center, as Gerald mentioned, is something we've been looking at over the past, I guess, twelve weeks to look at essentially a proof of concept for this site as the new home for the Active Living Center. And in our work as landscape architects and urbanists and Ian has been an important contributor to all of this is one of the things that we'd like to start with is just creating a set of goals and objectives for the project that really helped to anchor the work and is a set of objectives that we always turn back to or look back to as the project evolves or changes over time. But I think this concept of returning to home and you'll see in this slide deck is really essential to all of the big ideas associated with the, you know, the potential of this site. And we really see the, the location of the, of the center is a driver for waterfront development and its co-location with other activities that we're seeing immediately adjacent to it, both on the water and on the, actually in the water and helping to put Marathon really at the center of activity on the North Shore. Looking at health and wellness is a guiding idea for both individuals and, and I would also argue for, for groups, for the community as a whole. But also, I would argue for the natural environment. This is a site that has been an industrial site for almost a century. And the idea of healing this site and reintroducing the natural environment and some of the ecological features of the site are central to the work that we do as landscape architects. So which, these are some of the guiding principles that really attract us to, to the potential of locating the building and, and facilities here. We, we did a bit of research, Stefan and Lucia and Sunny at our office started to do a bit of research with the aerial photographs from nineteen forty-seven to present day and having, of course, some familiarity with, with the center of town and how it slowly moved away from the original town center down by the Everest and the old rec center to, to, you know, where the tomboy used to be and the plaza up into the away from the edge of the water and stringing out a long peninsula road, I think is and as the town has grown, it, it, there's a natural sort of movement of where the town center would be. But this idea of actually returning it back to the water and the origins of the community, I think, were really appealing to us. And this blank canvas, in many ways, this industrial brownfield site gives us a lot of a lot of potential, open potential for how we want to organize and arrange facilities on that site. One of the other features, and I think, you know, I think Marathon is uniquely located where all of these larger macro landscapes converge, whether it's the Canadian Shield, the boreal forest and the Great Lakes. They all come together along the North Shore. And I think it's, I think it's partly the reason why the group of seven were attracted to paint in this area and capture the incredible beauty of this place. And we think that the site is emblematic of all of those features. We have the rocky oak croppings along the shore. You have the boreal forest, some of which have been re-established already on site to the, to the north and east where the bark piles used to, well, currently still are. And of course, these great incredible views towards the water that we can all amplify by locating these facilities on the water. There's also an opportunity to recreate, reconnect with the larger landscape and Mark is, and Daryl have informed of the, you know, the, the Group of Seven Trail that is a really important generator of recreational activity that connects park to park and Marathon really being at the center of it all. And, you know, when you look at the site and its potential to be that, that gap in that waterfront edge, and I would argue again, if you didn't work at the mill, the site is somewhat anonymous and it's something that you're not familiar with. You haven't been on that place. So I think the, the ability for it to, to connect these larger parts of the, the recreation facilities on, in, in town is immense. So Stefan did this fifteen-minute radius showing some of the key recreational facilities already in town, the golf course and lake and double beach. And that by locating a series of new facilities on the water, we start to connect the dots between and fill a bit of a gap in the overall arrangement of recreational facilities in town. And then referring back to the original map showing Puckasaw and Mays, this trail now becomes an opportunity for us to extend out between the two hills facing the harbor and then connect across that. So it really helps to, to fulfill some of the gaps in that overall trail network along the water. I think site in, with regard to the site's specificity of, of this place, again, looking at how that connection occurs across the waterfront edge. And you'll see how we think that could be arranged on site. Also thinking about future activities with support, where we're aware of the relationships that Marathon has established with Bitto Gone First Nation to establish this as a potential economic generator. And that also includes road and rail accesses that we need to contemplate with, with this arrangement. And of, and of course harbor access from, from the water side. We also see this opportunity to, to bring some of that forest, the boreal forest edge onto the site. You can see some of these edges or these areas here which are starting to regenerate already. There's useful forests that we see the opportunity to bring a bit of that natural, these corridors of green onto the site, whether it's along the waterfront edge or down from the hillsides and repair the site to, to what it was previous to when the mill was there. View sheds are really important, and I think Mark had alluded to this in some of the discussions we had, is bringing visitors to town, but also residents right down to the water through town is really helping to privilege these incredible views, whether it's from the pick hill, that first glimpse of the water, is it coming in off the highway, coming down peninsula and looking out over Stephen, down Stevens towards the water, even the lookout just beyond where the Everest site used to be. The crossings over the former rail line looking into the site. And then that final sequence of views, looking out right at the water's edge, looking out over Peninsula Harbor. So this, the serial landscape, as I like to call it, this, this draw down to the water is a really important opportunity that we can capture with the arrangement of, of buildings. One of the other things we wanted to mention is activations of former industrial water fronts is, is, is an incredibly great opportunity to work on brownfield sites. You can see this in Thunder Bay with the work they did at Prince Arthur's Landing. Or we've done some work in North Vancouver, again, sites that were completely publicly inaccessible, working water fronts that are now super rich, compelling public amenities adjacent to gallery spaces, restaurants. Mix, a complete mix of uses. We see this in Duluth as well with Canal Park and some of the work we've done in Richmond. So this is not, this is part of a bigger, larger global phenomena of returning the water to the public. And, you know, both local and international examples of that, I think, it makes, makes sense for us to be really looking at that. And because it is a brownfield site, it gives us a lot of latitude to explore how these program, programmatic items are deployed on the site. So Mark ran through the beginning of the project, some of the program that we'd like to consider, whether it's more formal fields like soccer and baseball, could be driving ranges, netted driving ranges, more court sports, RV parking, camping as well, with more of an informal mix of things which have less, they're less about size requirements and more about the types of uses. They can kind of grow or shrink according to the need. Also looking at opportunities for trail and connectivity as we've described earlier. But, but integrating within that, those, those routes are opportunities to interpret cultural heritage of the place. And when I, what I mean by that is it could be, it could be an indigenous heritage. It could be industrial heritage. It could be natural heritage. These are all things that could be, you know, as the plan emerges and evolves, become highlights along, along the waterfront edge. And that all is in combination with the Active Living Center program, the interior program, which includes rink, pool, possibility of expansion and, and extension of that, whether that's for bowling or for curling facilities as well. These, these spatial, these blocks are based on the massing diagrams that were prepared for the old public school site. So we're just, just so you're aware, when you see them in the, in the future, in the diagrams later in the presentation here. And we're also looking at about three hundred parking stalls that can be deployed throughout the site. One of the other guiding principles is indigenous heritage. Marathon has, and I have to say, everything that Daryl and Mark have communicated to us, a wonderful relationship with Bitto Gone First Nation. It's, in my opinion, an advanced relationship. And we are aware of the importance of a strong municipal or relationship between jurisdictions. And it sounds like things are off to a great start. We see a lot of potential for this site here and right down to the detail and how indigenous traditional knowledge can be expressed on this place. And we look at it from a metaphorical perspective, whether it's maybe interpreted interpreting form like the Puckasaw fits on the site or right down to the detail of the plant material that we use to to enrich the place. And I imagine Ian would even be interested in looking at formal approaches to the buildings as, as those gets moved into detailed design. So those are all things that are, whoops, sorry, let me go back here. Really important to understanding, but in, that in combination with industrial heritage as well in these, you know, the pyramids of the, of Lake Superior, as they were called on this postcard from, from the nineteen seventies, you know, are really compelling ideas around landform. And, you know, we have a site of significance that allows us to maybe explore how these forms could be re-interpreted on the site. But also then reused for recreational purposes. If we need a toboggan hill, that perhaps it could be incorporated into forms like this. And I, I think the scale that we're operating at in terms of the landscape and its response to this being vast, you know, inland sea, I think is something that we should consider. At the same time, celebrating some of the, the past in the, the industrial past and the importance that the mill and in fact even the mines and the and the industrial heritage of Marathon could be represented on this place. There could be few artifacts that we found on site, or they could be through metaphorical ways of incorporating it into our design. So I, normally I pause for questions, but I'm just going to move through and, and go into our site explorations and some of the big moves that we've been exploring here. Happy to pause if there's any, anything that we want to discuss in particular. But you can see here our industrial sites that were, the, the port operations that we, the footprint of that and how it might relate to the rest of our site here. The marina up here, we have actually put in the footprint of the Viking cruise ship to see how it sort of relates to the size of the, of the moorage there. But lots of interesting activities that are adjacent to the site, which really lends this site to a, a good co-location with all of those activities. We mapped out where the new forest is starting to regenerate here over the, the bark piles, the forest is kind of pushing in on the side and, and also down from the hills. There is a generally on, a, a site that's unadorned and flat, relatively flat, I would also say in this area with one existing building, the pre-existing spur line that existed and of course the historic town center. Lots of interesting features along the waterfront as well. We started to look at the trail connections that we can, where they, we think they could come through, down through from, across from the lagoon and also along from Carter Cove. And looking at view sheds, so these access points that descend down from Stevens that onto Winton, we think of that as the primary access and perhaps a secondary access over to the north and how those view sheds could be shaped from that first access to the site. Maybe even carving the landscape to, to allow for those views. Then thinking about how we could break the site down into some bigger gestures and we, this red or pinkish area along the waterfront really being that primary public edge. What is within those that, that, that edge is to be determined, but primarily a trail access, obviously, something that allows for a, a series of elements that could be deployed along that, whether it's more recreational uses, it could be water-related activities, it could be access down to the lake. It could also be elements associated with the, with the marina as well and taking advantage of the different features along that waterfront edge. So we really wanted to characterize that whole frontage as being completely public and not burdened with any buildings or private uses along the stretch. And thinking of the, these sites and, you know, the large footprint associated with rinks and pools could be located on a, like I say, a fairly simple, flat site immediately within view of that first descent down from the old town center, co-located with maybe industrial buildings that might emerge out of the, out of the operations with the port. And then looking at more of the north and northern portions of the site as being recreational in, in use and softer uses, given that it has a forest to work with. So this, this was really looking at, and, and I want to be clear and Daryl sort of alluded to this as well, is that this is just a proof of concept. We're not suggesting, although make, there are some rationale for locating a building here. But this is just that proof of concept to show that everything that we're talking about actually fits on the site. It's a large site, lots of opportunities to explore variations to this plan as we evolve. But showing more of the recreation, the Active Living Center in this location, again, in view of that first descent down, parking tucked in behind that and the future spur line here. Also, if we think of the building as an opportunity to open up glazing on the north side of the building that allows for views to the water, so you could be skating or, or swimming inside the facility and having a north-facing view, this, this actually makes a lot of sense in terms of the location. It allows us to look at more of the more heavily programmed fenced facilities like ball, diamonds and soccer fields immediately adjacent to that. Taking some of the three hundred parking stalls, although when the majority is associated with the building, but also locating more parking here, adjacent to the fields and also with the marina, some existing parking actually up there. And then looking at the more northern portions as being more naturalized. And again, we could contemplate playing with forms, landform that could recall some of the original landforms that we saw with the, to mill operations. So this is more of a rendering that shows what that could look like, how we would carve out the forest to allow for views through, really creating a really strong sense of gateway and entrance to the site in what I call legibility. So if you arrive, you can clearly see where parking and access to the building would, would occur. And then allowing for a range of activities or types of sport activities that are co-located with the building, so immediately adjacent to the building. And really thinking again, just to reiterate that, that entire waterfront edge is, is accessible to the public and this trail that comes along that water edge is really taking advantage of that relationship. We also did a few studies with the building layout, again, using the the test case from the public school site and the, the foot, the footprint of that building. So what you saw in the master plan diagram that we're showing, again, shows those north-facing views that could be actually taken advantage of from the sighting, tucking more of an entrance off of the front and then having the vast majority of parking tucked in behind with a central corridor atrium space that could link these two, what I call the ice facility and the, in the wet facility, separated by a grand concourse. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't look at breaking up the massing to take advantage of views or just its fit on the site. This is an example down here where you could shift the massing and allow for a future extension to actually become part of that expression, the building. Likewise, up here, again, taking advantage of views to the words, to the water and just how we could actually shape the site to accommodate all the variety of other activities, whether it's tennis and pickleball or basketball and other types of playground amenities and things that really benefit from being located close to the, to the center itself. Future extension would consider things, and we don't know what that could, would be, but there's a list of types of uses that could include, like I say, curling, bowling, a senior center, you know, club rooms, meeting rooms, all those kinds of things that are associated with that, although I think some of those are actually fitted within this footprint as well. Ian, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to, to the building program description?
No, I enjoy you kind of described the main elements as well. Of course, it's, it's extraordinarily diagrammatic at this point. As Joe has said, it's just to demonstrate that the site has the capacity to fit the footprint of what's being contemplated as well as, you know, some form of vision of future expansion. When the, the, the large effort here, and it's great to have the landscape architect actually making the first brushstrokes on this particular site, rather than bringing in engineers and the architect. It's very fitting, in fact, that the site really is more background to the architecture and the foreground is the landscape, is the outdoor elements that happen because of the power of the site itself being, as Joe said, an inland sea, an inland ocean, greatest lake in the world. So that was really why we had kind of talked about setting the building location at the base of the hill. So that the, that the hill is actually the backdrop to the building, that the building doesn't overscale or block any sensitive element of being able to enjoy the, the entire bay itself. So Joe, that's the only thing I wanted to add. And just to reinforce how important, in a master plan analysis, when you're looking at site, that in these circumstances, the architect and the engineer, they're sitting in the background and they're letting and listening to Joe and the expertise of landscape come forward on a project of this nature. So thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Ian. So this is our last image of the slide deck. But again, just to reiterate everything we've been talking about, this is just a test case, a series of site explorations to show how the ALC or the Active Living Center can be located on the site. Should this be approved by, by council and by mayor and council, we see a lot of opportunities to, to explore a lot of other arrangements and, and relationships to, to the site. And who knows what might emerge out of those discussions. But fundamentally, we really just see a lot of immense potential for a site that, as I say, is, you know, in the last few years has been neglected. It's, there's been a lot of associations to the old uses with the mill. But it's about returning this waterfront to the community. And I think that's the biggest potential that this site has to offer. And I'd just love to hear your comments and questions related to what we presented here.
Great. Thanks, Joe, and thanks, Ian. The, the open concept of the actual waterfront is, is key. And we think that that is the key, that direction. As you notice above there where the old Everest was, as well as the property between there and the sewing studio, as well as obviously the, the Lakeview Center will be then demolished once the Active Living Center is done. There's huge potential for future development for condos, you know, multi-residential type higher end facilities overlooking lake, of course, overlooking the, the Active Living Center and the recreational complex down there. One key question I have, whether the concept is moved where the Active Living Center is in the middle or the tennis and soccer pitches are on the left side, Joe? What is the potential buffer, natural or not, to have block off the industrial site out of the port authority? Because we know that we want to develop that and will be some, some, some type of structure on that facility. You know, what, what, what would be a good recommendation for the difference between the, the two properties?
To the question, thanks. It's a great question, Barry. I think, I think we can, again, as, should this be approved or to move forward to another level of investigation? I think there's lots of opportunities to look at more landscape-related screening that could help to separate types of use from each other. I think we really just wanted to show that, you know, the mass of this building is probably similar to some of the masses. Uh, I think we really just wanted to show that, you know, the mass of this building is probably similar to some of the masses of building you would see on the port operations. And that it could actually act as that buffer in in some ways. The building acts as the buffer and you really focus the views out towards the water. Uh, with the backside of the building being a little bit more, uh, I guess, more utilitarian. Uh, so that's one option. Another option is that it is co- like, like you say, co- co-located with or clo- more closely located to the, to the town center. And we didn't want to show all of our explorations, but that was certainly one thing that we, we, uh, we were looking at. And um, I think one of the big questions is the spur line, you know, as they're reinstating a rail spur that connects to the port, which I imagine is desirable. Um, how does that relationship work, you know, across quite a significant grade change to begin with? And then another right of way there. So, but we, not to say we didn't explore it, I mean, there's ways to resolve it. Uh, but that's also an option that we think uh would make some sense. Uh, we didn't actually explore anything where it would be located to the northern uh side of the site in part because we felt this is a little bit softer and a little bit more. Let's just call it passive uh in its use. Um, and a little bit removed from the the action down by the town center.
Great. Thanks to the council.
Yeah, I was just wondering, with that located in the, I guess, the southern portion and with the uh, what used to be the the hill on the side. How would that location affect any usage of solar or or green technology? Uh, being in that location where they're not in direct sun or the sun path, we were to explore solar or wind as alternatives or complementing that existence. Uh, is there another location or is it possible to explore the locations and again, buffered away from the hill that we could take advantage of? That technology?
Sure. Uh, we, we, thanks for the comment and question, Kelly. I, I think. This, my gut instinct is that solar would probably still work if we were to look at it on top of the roofs here. I don't think that shade. It might, we'd have to look at it, but don't hold to say that we, we, we could get into the details of that uh with regards to solar uh. Uh, access uh in that location, particularly in the late part of the year uh around uh winter equinox. Uh, so having said that, yeah, I would imagine that sites further out of the shadow of the hills would probably be more desirable from that perspective. As for wind technologies, again, something we, we did do some uh wind rose studies to see where prevailing winds are coming and. It is a well protected harbor. It's probably why it's functions as a harbor. So uh, you know, the stuff that we can certainly uh get into more uh detailed analysis. Uh, but um, at this point, the answer is not entirely certain, but I think this probably would still work uh for. Uh, for some, for affordable tax on on escapes.
Thanks, Councilor Suki.
Uh, thanks. Uh, thanks, Joe, for your great presentation. I definitely support the concept. I think it'll be uh a great opportunity. Uh, my question is, so it'll be a hard question to answer in terms of like inflation and whatnot, but price or the cost that it would have been on Stevens. Is it comparable to what the cost would be here, like in terms of like site preparation? Better? Or to be like, say, you know. View price now perceived would be forty, would be forty on this site as well, or would be additional costs is due to the the site location?
Um, I don't know if I can fully answer that question, although I'll ask Ian to jump in because he has a good sense of of building costs and 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 associated, uh, you know. Uh, you know, things regarding structural, mechanical and all the systems. Um, generally speaking, I would. In in terms of budget, I think a site that is relatively flat and relatively simple to build on uh is, is probably uh the most cost effective. As it relates to a Stevens site or a closer, a closer proximity to the Stevens site. Um, we did explore, you know, some very, very preliminary conceptual ideas around how a building could. Sort of sit adjacent to a spur line like this and maybe even have a, a span over top that landed at a higher elevation. That that actually went over top of the rail line that, you know, provides a bit of a presence at the, at the corner. Uh, much more expensive and you, you know, it, it was just kind of testing the waters. It would certainly have a cost implication. But if we were to take the same approach of having a fairly simple slab on grade. Uh, I don't think that would have an implication to costs, you know, it just moving the the buildings from. Uh, anywhere on this site, I think would be essentially the same is when you start talking about really special conditions that I think uh costs would start to be impacted. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Ian?
No, I think the, you know, when it comes to the actual building itself, regardless where it's located. I don't think there would be any difference from one site to the next. There wouldn't. Uh, it, you know, typically in a brand new building. Um, the, the costs uh that um site A or site B would differ from is, are are those site development costs themselves? In this circumstance, you already have a site that is to, to, to a large degree, it's already cleared. Um, you have a huge laydown area, you know, the actual act of construction and putting materials somewhere, there's an expansive amount of space. In order to organize actually the sequence of construction, a contractor would love to be down here. Kind of developing because they have a a huge area to work to. Um, you certainly have good proximity to the water itself. So when you talk about renewables and access to geothermal. Um, potential uh with its uh proximity to the lake, I mean, all that potential is is there to be explored. Um, regardless of any site, there would have to be some uh investigation. Uh, into the soils themselves, the nature of the soils, the strength of the soils. So whether it's at the Stevens site or it's higher up. Um, uh, or down in the location to where the old industrial area was. It's still necessary to go through a study, uh, and this is very early on. Uh, and the, the effort on, on, on this analysis was to demonstrate. That a, a very comprehensive master plan of recreation, community development. Um, could be envisioned over a period of time. And that there's a great story to be told in the town of Marathon in the years ahead. On this particular area. And as Joe has said, whether the building's in the southerly area or maybe sliding more to the center of the area. That still is, is, is a ways off to determine exactly how this building would, would uh be situated. Um, you know, the kind of harvesting of of solar power that might be part of the development. Um, in terms of cost. Uh, I think, you know, the next steps would be to verify that there aren't any major red flags associated with the soils and the development in Marathon. Um, your community has this wonderful reputation in all of Northwest Ontario with sands. And I speak to that, having developed uh large projects all the way from, you know, this region to Canora. And the sands of Marathon actually bring a, a relief to building development. So in in that nature, we would hope that, given that there was a huge industrial development on this property that had very heavy buildings placed on. That the nature of this building actually being cited here probably is actually more risk adverse to some degree. Uh, because it's already been tested out. Uh, the services that have been brought to this property that fed a huge development are there. It's, it's actually, it's over service. So when you're talking about service development, um, these, this, this kind of infrastructure, it's already kind of been in place. So. I, I think some of the major flags about this site. Uh, have already been addressed in some of the earlier developments and historic developments that are here. Uh, but certainly there is absolutely the need to take a look at the soils and to look uh further in. To validating, um, you know, what, what Joe is demonstrating here. It's a very promising future for uh the program that that you, that your, uh, your town has contemplated.
Great. Thanks for that, Ian. Great. I think their administration has identified that, uh, once we identify this as the. Chosen site, then we'll go through the environmental assessment portion to uh make sure the site's clean and clear. Of course, going through the next phase of all that, uh, as to the. The master plan design and uh and specs on the building and uh and property itself. So. Yeah, this is uh, uh, obviously if you decide to determine whether or not council is fully. Location from Stevens to what? Councilor Valance, do you have any questions?
More so a comment, it would be regarding the site layout and the weather coming off the water and stuff like that. In conjunction with like site safety and stuff like that, how does that all play out?
Um, thanks, uh, thanks, Councilor Valance. I, um, I, I don't know if you maybe be be a bit specific, but in terms of. Like safety, are you thinking more about access for emergency services and things like that or? And.
Yeah, more so making sure everything's kind of laid out in the most appropriate manner so that especially, like if we're talking with the baseball diamond. And weather coming off the water, that, how that all fits in. And then I guess the extra layer of after that question is. Um, how to maintain the safe safety of all those pieces working together? And which ones fall into the most opportune place for the weather and stuff like that?
Right. That's a good comment, actually, with regards to those fog banks that roll in at times. Uh, I, I think, um. That's a good, yeah, I think what we, what we've, in terms of the orientation and location of uh, of fields, uh, soccer, baseball. Um, we could start looking at the optimal location in terms of, you know, their direction, north, southeast, west. But also maybe even using landform to help uh shield and protect it from prevailing winds that might occur off of the water in particular. And give it a bit of a protection from uh, uh, extreme weather. Um, so we can look at that in more detail. Um, I think in terms of access for safety. You know, we, we have two, uh, at least two and maybe even three locations uh that could be co-located with industrial uses, port activities, but two good access points. Um, to the, the vast majority of the site spaced nicely along that edge. And um, you know, obviously we would design the entire public amenity along here to provide. Uh, places for emergency vehicle services to get access down to the water in the event that there's any kind of. Uh, need to to do so. Uh, I mean, we would obviously get into more detailed discussions as the master planning evolves. Um, the spur line, again, is, I suppose it's a question I go, it does make some sense. Uh, you know, we're obviously aware that the one crossing here. Uh, over the CPR line has some impact us into, into access to the state as well, but uh. Uh, I think we can make sure that we're talking to the right people, fire, police and emergency services to make sure we're making this accessible and safe.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, any other questions? Okay, I, I think that's great that council will, will discuss and of course, uh, decide on whether or not this is a approved site to move back to living center to uh. Go to the next stage. Hopefully the next stage is, is something we can get some traction with the funding and government and industry. In our community as well as residents. Uh, we've been on this for some five years now. And uh, we really need to have this facility in our community over the next term of this council. So I think this is part of the strat plan. This council discussed in the new year will be that more respite in our priority of this. So we appreciate your time, Senator. And then Joe and Lucia and this, and I appreciate the information you provided.
Thanks for your time. Thanks to Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so I do have a motion here, uh, council, like just arrived, but it was basically just an overview of the site location, as you know, issue from your email you received. Just identifying where they would locate proper pieces of that or as like Joe just stated, he can move things around within the property based on councils that decided. You and location of those things. So if you have a motion here, like the. By. Second by. That, uh, council. Uh, hereby accept the recommendation, locate the potential development of new active living center on the Peninsula Harbor waterfront property. For that administration is hereby directed now to include a detailed report as part of the twenty twenty three municipal budget process outlining critical next steps in the project development and associated costs with. Any questions? Very now, call a question, all in favor? So Valance, good?
Yes.
Much. Very. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Next, we have a report on the, uh. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, everyone.
For the new public works and operations.
So I'll take the reporting worship and uh Mr. Parrish will answer any of the deep questions that council may have. So on March the twenty eighth, uh, of twenty twenty two, council approved administration to proceed with the development of a new works and operations facility. Uh, budgeted at seven point seven million dollars. A verbal project update was brought forward to council on October the eleventh, informing council that the tender for the new works facility closed on September the fifteenth. And four compliant bids received were over budget. Administration issued a post tender addendum with the three lowest bidders. Post tender addendum broke down areas of potential cost savings by removing elements of the project. And reviewing alternate mechanical, electrical, civil and architectural elements. As well as reviewed sections of the project that could be removed and work performed in-house with town forces over a number of years to result in further cost savings. Post tender addendum closed on October the twentieth, twenty twenty two, with three compliant bids received. The bids received were over the original project budget of seven point seven million dollars, indicating current market rates as being the main reason. Rising inflation, interest rates, labor rates, building materials. Fuel and freight cost factors which have risen over, have risen over the course of the pandemic are driving the cost of construction. This is reflected in the three competitive bids received. Following the submission and detailed review of the post tender addendum items. CGV group has been determined as the lowest compliant bidder. The revision cost of construction through post addendum is nine point nine million dollars. Architectural and engineering costs are five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. Total cost including HST is ten point six or ten point six nine nine million dollars. Uh, this is an increase of three point two million dollars over the original budget cost of seven point seven. Financially, in addition to the increase in costs, infrastructure Ontario's lending rates have also increased since March the twenty second, or since March twenty twenty two. We've listed out all the tables. I'm not going to go through them, um, but council can see that realistically, uh, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of likely four to five percent. Move this project forward. I, and we honestly, uh, in discussions with infrastructure Ontario, we don't see those costs fundamentally coming down. Recently, uh, with the, the interest rate hike by the Bank of Canada. Uh, the provincial ministry of municipal affairs annual repayment limit for twenty twenty two for the town of Marathon. Is twenty million dollars. Uh, this is based on an interest rate of seven percent. Uh, so at five percent, uh, which is what we could get from uh infrastructure Ontario right now, uh, our, our borrowing limit would be twenty three million. Uh, in twenty twenty two, the town levied five point three million dollars in property tax. Uh, there is an opportunity to to raise additional cash for this project uh through a, a one half to one percent increase uh for this project. Administration is confident and has negotiated the best possible construction bid it can for this project. And does not believe that factors driving construction costs will flatten out anytime soon. Based on this, administration is of the opinion that this project should proceed to construction as it's been on the books since two thousand and sixteen. Council's options today are proceed with the development and construction of the new works and operations facility in twenty twenty two with an in-service date of early twenty twenty four. Or do not proceed with the project at this time. And your administration recommends that option A be selected and that administration be authorized to issue the legally binding project construction tender. Current facility utilization such as infrastructure Ontario as well as finance terms. And any use of municipal reserve funds for this project will be discussed and finalized with council in January twenty twenty three as part of the twenty twenty three municipal budget process.
Thank you for that information report. I have a motion. So council, hereby accept the attachment for recommendation. That this if I proceed with the development and construction of the new operation facility in twenty twenty two, an in-service date of twenty twenty four. For that current facility utilization and financing terms and any use of municipal reserve funds for this project will be discussed and finalized in the council's. Meeting in January as part of the twenty twenty three municipal budget process. Move back. Uh, next, and then council, questions, council, Lee?
So there was no good news in that report. Um, that's a, that's a tough one, right? And I get that the, the market forces are there. And I think probably I'll beat council to the shit of saying this, that. Um, you know, you don't necessarily have to have a new wreck facility. We absolutely have to have public works. It's, it's not pretty and nobody's going to go visit it and it's not going to be a showcase for the community, but we can't run around. So one of those terrible things you have to. terrible things you have to, you gotta redo your roof, you gotta redo your windows, they're not sexy, but I get that that's important. I wish it were not, that it were here. Um, looking back, I mean, the thing I'll ask is, is there a lesson we learned around going through this process that we could have done different? I think we're gonna have to eat the, eat the, the money. Obviously, I think it's a state that just is. Um, did we learn anything so that as we move forward?
Counselor Lake, I think actually the entire province and the country is learning everything right now is the past two years, the pandemic has really created uncertainty, market is so volatile. And even cost consultants right now can't even give you a price. So when we looked at Altis, who's, you know, looks at all public sectors of, of Canada and buildings and taking average square footage prices over a history of time. Prior to those numbers, we'd actually inflated it knowing that Marathon is a premium location, we're gonna pay a premium price for mobilizing, demobilizing costs. We'd, we'd allowed for that. It is still exceeded that to a point where it's known to be a guest. So, uh, have we learned from it? I think the cost consultants and the whole world is going to change to the cost of square footage. Um, and that's about the only answer I can give you. And I can tell you right now, we worked hard, uh, as a team. We spent countless hours with, um, our engineers or architect. Um, with the low bid, which was CGV after post addendum. Uh, to be honest, we've come up with, you know, between some, reducing of some scope of work and some savings. I think it was one point eight million we came in at. So we've worked hard the last couple of weeks to bring this presentation to yous. Uh, and we've looked at everything, um, and, and I think at the end of the day, this is what the market bears and um, and I agree with you, it's not flashy, but it's a need.
We gotta have it.
Mrs. Kurchinsky first, so council.
I, I just, uh, it's a great question. And I think one of the things that we've already started to work with our legal counsel on is you know, i- i- in the past, you know, the open tender process was generally what you utilize to achieve your savings. And it's now actually working in reverse, as Mr. Parrish said, right? When you put a tender out there, right? There's a, you know, based on the pandemic, there's a whole number of factors you can use in escalating to build prices now. So what we're gonna look at as part of our, uh, you know, our, the redoing of our procurement by law with the new term of council is what other open transparent legally methods can we utilize to ensure that when we budget a project that we can bring it in on budget? So such as, you know, looking at things like design, finance, build as opposed to an open tender. Right? So there, there's options, we've already started looking at knowing that we have other capital projects vis a vis an active living centre potentially. So we started that work that will come to council as part of the new strategic plan.
That is clear. So I, I RFP and uh, and, and tender, design, uh, finance build, I don't know that term.
So, so design, finance, build is what we did at the supportive housing complex. Where we actually, we utilize the public process, but we engaged a contractor who designed the building, uh, at their cost, financed the bill and then turned it over to us after day three sixty-five, right?
That worked great, yep.
You know, so we're, we're exploring those options, knowing that this is going to be an ongoing challenge, not even just twenty twenty-three, probably forever, to be honest.
Absolutely.
Uh, yeah, so I, I understand that you tried to pare down the project to try and get within budget and that wasn't reasonable. Um, are you confident that you didn't pare down the project to the point where it now becomes? I won't say not what we envisioned, but we're gonna keep having to add year after year in add-ons or whatever it may be. And if that's the case, are those add-ons reasonable in the foreseeable future? And then also, is it going to be built with the capacity for those add-ons or enhancements that we've cut and cut out of the project?
Sure. Uh, and when we looked at that, we did not change the physical dimension of the building, we didn't change the characte- characteristics of the building. That has remained the same. We looked at some options, for example, when we looked at cost cutting, where we went back to post addendum and we were able to negotiate with again with a low bidder. They were able to go and put pressure and, you know, and rely on their substrates. So we've seen some savings there, that one was two hundred and fifty thousand, for example. Okay, we looked at the fire alarm. Under the Ontario Building Code, it's not required by law for that facility, for that code, okay, it's a class F building. Now, we like to put it in because it's provision, it's protection of the building, but then you've got to look at risk and cost. So there's an item we removed. Um, we looked at security card readers. Well, we go back to keys, you know, we managed with keys for many years, we'll have to go back to that. So those are the items I think when we really look at as a whole. Um, flooring products, for example, you know, we spec the specific flooring, we're gonna substitute. We looked at, um, uh, when we look at our de-stratification fans, uh, especially because we're gonna have in-floor heat and how we, you know, lower that temperature, we spec the specific brand, we're taking alternate, you know, we approve equal. We looked at some different lighting layouts, uh, we, you know, we like a certain brand, but you know what? We have some equivalents. Price point was there and we're gonna take advantage of that. So I think overall, uh, councillor Tavusi, I think the, the building itself hasn't changed. We still have you know, we wanted a fleet car wash system in there for washing our equipment, that is, that's gonna remain in the project. The place remains in the project, with a ten-ton crane remains in the project, change rooms, washroom facilities, accessibility to the site. I think one of the biggest hopes we've done is, um, the civil side of things in regards to groundwater management. That, uh, we were able to reduce by seven hundred and ninety-four thousand. So that's gonna be a project that we do with our team. We have equipment, we'll phase it over a couple of years. Uh, in regards to grading, sodding, planting, um, sidewalks, those type of aspects. And we looked at the asphalt, we don't have asphalt where we are now, where you know what, we can manage without it. We could put some curbing in, some plantations and some seed. We've got summer students and we'll, we'll create that over the next couple of years. I think in a, in a nutshell, I think those are probably some of the biggest items we really looked at. Ontario Hydro, um, you know, we had budgeted fifty thousand for utility fees coming in for connections. We were able to reduce that to a zero dollar. Um, so that was, you know, a big plus when they, they gave that fee, but you never know until you get the applications in. Uh, but we did get confirmation that that would be a zero fee. So I think, uh, overall, uh, we're, we're pleased with the building. We know it's gonna be around for the next for, you know, eighty years and it'll be very functional for growth and, and the capacity that we need.
Good?
Okay, just a follow-up there. Um, so we're looking at ten million dollars for their plus or minus, uh, which will go on our ability to borrow. Uh, we have a guarantee still within a manner of ten million dollars. That, that they're self-funding, but it is still on paper. Um, is our limit enough or our leeway enough to function and to look at other long-term projects uh, in the future? Because if twenty-three million is our maximum, obviously we know what project that fifty plus is not gonna be within our our preview, even if we got one third funding. So how can we maneuver or work around that kind of issue? Because we're gonna be maxed out in our ability to borrow.
Yeah, excellent, excellent question. Uh, and it's a, it's a subject that the mayor and I discussed this morning and, uh, you know, so I, I think, you know, we can remove the matter, um, you know, we, we're, we're well on our way to, to paying, you know, down any remaining debt there. So we really fund, that doesn't fundamentally affect our municipal borrowing. Uh, from, you know, from this, uh, this project's perspective, that's why we structured council's motion the way we did. Is we're gonna bring back the best possible option to council in January, knowing that we have potentially other projects we have to fund. So at this point, we're not saying we're gonna borrow ten million. What we're saying is the project cost is ten million, that we need to move that forward. Now, it's likely the formula we're gonna bring to council is to borrow an amount, and I'll just use an example of seven million dollars. Let's say utilize reserves, um, you know, in, in an amount of two to three million dollars. And we are theoretically gonna have to look at a, a higher rate of taxation to fund these projects. So you know, traditionally, we've been one point or, you know, one point nine two percent. Uh, you know, maybe from a development perspective, we need to look at three point five to four percent. So we'll bring that back to council in, in January. Administration's very confident that we can, you know, through utilizing financing strategies such as that for both this project and the active living centre. Um, that, that both become feasible, um, if, you know, for this project and the active living centre one.
Counselor, uh, councillor Valz, you have anything?
No, I'm okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. I'm sure people at home are asking me questions themselves. Um, so I just want to be sure I understand this correctly. So this additional debt that we will be taking on would result in a, a half to one percent increase in our current property taxes, right?
No, that's, that's, so what, what we're saying is that, uh, you know, the, the round number of ten million dollars, right? You know, it, it could be financed in whole, right? Uh, it could be a combination of finance and reserves and it could be a combination of financing, reserves and additional taxation. But that's yet to be approved by council. That'll happen through the twenty twenty-three municipal budget process.
Future project.
You know, so, you know, the, and, and until we actually do the research, uh, uh, on those numbers and bring it forward to council, we can't provide the best scenario as yet to save us the most money, but that will come forward in January.
So just for the, and you, we're all gonna get this question as we leave this room tonight about the ten million dollar cost. We know it and we heard Mrs. Kurchinsky in regards to that. There is a heat, uh, uh, heat, HST rebate that will be reflective of probably close to a million dollars in this project. Because we do get a seventy.
Uh, it's about eight, eight, point eight-six.
Eight-six, so one, one, one million dollars roughly a ten million dollar project for HST. So that's a huge reduction. As Mr. Kurchinsky identified, the potential of utilizing our reserve accounts, we have a healthy reserve account. This could be reflective, but that's all gonna be discussed within the twenty twenty-three budget formula. So we, we can't go into the public and say it's gonna be a huge increase in taxation, but there could be potentially increase in taxation to address the ongoing operating costs. As you can see, this is an annual fee of you know, two to three hundred thousand dollars to pay down a mortgage on a potential ten million dollar.
I, I think we, we initially need, need to approve this so that you can move forward, our administration can move forward with negotiating of a price and a plan. I think that's the, the, the bottom line. We, we knew that, that this was in the works. We had always asked again about repurposing the, I'll even mention it, we've asked about repurposing the, the old mill garage and, and we realized that to, to retrofit something that old isn't, isn't the answer. So obviously, and our existing facilities, trying to refurbish those is not the answer. And I understand that. But I also understand that the administration, especially in the next term, gonna have to be creative on how you're gonna finance this. Because, I mean, if you look alone, inflation is seven percent and we've always looked at two percent as the margin and even back then we weren't keeping up to inflation. So this is something that's gonna come back and, you know, maybe we should have put more, you know, look at taxation as a way to generate more reserves. However, this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to move forward with the project because it is a necessity and and as council like said, it's not glamorous, but it's something that if you want your roads cloud or your, you know, there's, your waterworks working, it's something we need.
So wrapping it up, anybody else, council?
Yeah, and maybe just a, a, again, a question. I think we'd had the conversation with the mill garage or some other thing, that, that obviously didn't work. The other thing we talked about, um, long ago, I'm just not sure if there's any ability to update, is any partnerships that would also need kind of that public works, uh, space. I'm thinking about the MTO or you know, if there's any mine coming, do they need any, uh, any services that we could partner with to try to find uh, al- alternative, uh, folks who might want to pay? I don't know, Pete DeGon is looking for public works garage, they might, I, I'm just saying, I, I, you've done a great job of bringing down the price to where it's terrible, but it is what it is. Uh, is there any other partner we have in the neighboring communities or industries that, that might help? And again, I know that becomes logistically really tough, but again, we're just trying to be creative, right?
Yeah, no, and I, and I think the facility is, is designed for the public works and, and we actually call it a public works facility. We, you know, we will plan on running recreation out of it in the summer. So there's a combination of all that altogether. We also need to remind ourselves that we do look after fire protection. So all the fire equipment, all that, we service all that, we manage it all. That's all part of this building, right? So it's not just for water sewer, it does encompass the entire community.
Wrapping it by no council, we'll, we'll have all the answers that come new year from administration to make a decision on. And I remind council, as we've talked about many times in the past, look at a reserve account making one half percent interest and we're gonna pay out five percent potential interest. It makes money-wise sense to take money from your reserve account to put down on a long-term, not leaving yourself high and dry, but at least utilizing dollars better cents-wise rather than having money sitting earning nothing and paying out five percent potential. So administration will bring back a, a real detailed report on how we look at that financing and make a decision in new year. It's the best route to take, but today we need to approve process of the a callback question with this motion. By council, like you said, by council, do you that we this process and a, a direct administration to go through with the construction and build a ever, council, councillor Valz?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much, Gary. Thank you very much for that report, gentlemen. And all good.
Good stuff.
Look forward to the, to the budget proposal.
You're making it challenging.
And hopefully.
Hopefully there's a new mining going, you're gonna have additional taxation.
Right, absolutely. That, that's key. So we, that'll be beneficial as, as a whole out, uh, in the future. So that's it for today. We have a, a closed session that we're gonna be discussing as some personnel matters right after this, uh, public session. Thank you to the public. And if you have any questions, by all means, after today's presentation, both, both facilities, don't be afraid to reach out to one of your councillors or your administration team.
Just, just for the, the public's information, the, the presentation from the architects will be posted to the town's website tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at five, uh, eleven P M. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.